See, we have at six o'clock, I'm gonna call up order the Village of Belleville Board of Trustees for Monday, October sixth, twenty twenty five. Agents. Pledge of Agents.
United States of America. This is the reality which stands one nation. In that it is all. Well, there's a chance it has to.
Please.
President Service.
President.
Uh, Trustees Bane and your on guard, your Cannon.
Your.
I hope crap.
Here.
As more as absent. Pecker.
Here.
For him.
Was the meeting posted?
Meeting was posted as required by law.
What participation?
I just have one tonight signed up, it's Connie.
Okay.
Oh. Does it matter who's my place?
You know.
Speak during.
Okay. You want some?
Mine's really short and quick. I was in here earlier about Midwest Living Magazine, and here's the ad, how nice big it is. So, it's this whole part right here, and everybody's listed in Green County but Belleville. So, we need to figure out how we can get. Keep this, but it's pretty cool. I'm done. Yeah.
All right.
I wanted to see the exact, that's pretty nice.
Right. Uh, so you know other public comments, we'll move on to. The consent agenda, and tonight. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine, it will be enacted in one motion, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member just requests it, in which event it will be removed from the consent agenda. And considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. We have minutes from September fifteenth. And September twenty ninth. And a resolution establishing the twenty twenty five trigger treating date and orders.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Here you got the second amendment one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's not some report, I have nothing to comment on tonight. Staff reports.
Thank you, Tori.
Uh, just to reiterate, we got a little over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants between the state and Dane County. Partly on Carolinas Street.
Uh, clerks, just as a matter of information, we're at a conference hosted by the Wisconsin National Commission this last week. I don't get information, a lot of stuff coming down the pipe regarding your technology. Um, and some. Possible complications legally regarding registration and citizenship, and then I know there's a lot of information out. Um, nothing has changed like yet, so expect that to continue to be a legal process, but if anybody asks a question, feel free to. On the my way, um, also, I am now certified to train clerks and, um, chief inspectors, so. Um. Correct. Information, so.
Cool. Congratulations. Nothing.
I think my life right.
Hey. Want to present presentations, discuss and consider a contract for service for the Village of Newglares and the Town of Newglares for emergency medical services.
Yeah, so this came to, uh, my desk late last week, it actually happened when I was in Washington State, but. That was the first meeting that I was able to attend a meeting last week, um, Kelsey and the town chair, uh, can kind of talk about what's going on on their end, but. This is, uh, an agenda I'd have viewed for more discussions, he won't actually approve anything tonight, he'll more or less give Shelley and Gary. Your blessing to make decisions, um, during the upcoming EMS meeting. Kelsey.
Yes.
Um, I'm Kelsey Johnson, I think I met all of you before the meeting, but I'm the village administrator in Newglares. Chris Narson is a town chair of the town of Newglares, they had a meeting at five, so he's gonna be here soon as he can. Uh, with his agreement in hand, his signed agreement, I believe you guys all got to build a Newglares Society agreement, uh, with the packet. Um. To put this in perspective, about a year and a half ago now, uh, the former village administrator and I, um, started having meetings regarding our current EMS provider in Newglares. Um, there is concern shared, um, and just some opportunities that we wanted to look into, we've always known, or at least the last couple of years, for for certain Belleville has done such a great job here. Administering EMS services and they've been successful with their district, um, if you're not familiar right now, in Newglares, you have a fire district that's really great and successful. Our EMS service is provided by a private nonprofit, which just makes it a little tricky just in that it's a private nonprofit, it's not a district. Municipalities don't serve on the board, we don't really have much of a say. In terms of what's what's happening, um, so we started looking further into it, and, um, our three-year contract with our current provider was up at the end of this year. So we've been undergoing contract negotiations for the large part of this year. Uh, we've had conversations with Belleville, and we actually applied for the innovation study grants, we were awarded that at the beginning of this year through the state of Wisconsin. It was seventy-five thousand dollars to study the feasibility of EMS services for the Village of Newglares now and the future. Um, and we formed an EMS steering committee as part of that study to help analyze some of the data that was being presented and, uh, help make recommendations at the end of the study for our village board. That study is still ongoing, but throughout the study thus far, we realize that there's a significant issue in volunteer hours with our current operation, um, in the last seven years, there's been a decline of ten thousand volunteer hours. That's massive, especially considering the state average of calls is almost doubled. Um, so that's a concern for the village, and we're also on the cusp of a major growth development, I know. Belleville is growing here, so you all understand how important it is to not only have services that fit the needs of your population now, but fit fit the needs going forward. Um, so it really spurred a conversation, um, with Chris and Josh here, and with our village board and the town board, um, and some of our staff and the Newglares Fire Department. About how we can better serve our residents now and in the future. Um, with the study grant, the second step of that is the innovation grant, there's three hundred million dollars available. Throughout the state for regionalization or collaboration between communities. Up to ten million dollars per year can be awarded to individual municipalities or counties. That's a really exciting opportunity, this is the first of its time in the state of Wisconsin, and they just opened the grant portal now, and it stays open through twenty thirty. Um, so it's it's quite a long time, and it's quite a process to see through, uh, the applicants that went through the study, and are now trying to implement some of those changes. So not only is this an opportunity for this next year for us to collaborate, but it's an opportunity for us to collaborate in the future, and we really look forward and hope that you feel the same. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
Um, so Debbie provided a resolution, I'll let you look through that, and then here's also a grid map of all the. EMS services within. Being some green. Or some of them, all of Green Cap.
Thank you. So this would be the new. District map.
Believe so, that's one of you send me.
Yes, yes, correct. A major change, of course, was, uh, Belleville taking over the village and the town, I do think there's opportunity for further discussions with other municipalities as well. Um, but those are the two municipalities that discussed this last week.
Okay.
It's not a dumb deal. It was on the news tonight, you were. You get it.
I just heard about it last week.
Same.
I just heard about it last week too, but it was on the news tonight, the Belleville and Newglares EMS are going to get.
So. So when is our new ambulance supposed to be delivered?
July of twenty twenty-six.
So. Until then, one of our ambu-. He in Newglares. And the other one will be here.
That's correct.
So. You know, I guess. My concern is obviously, you know, one ambulance is out. Now, where's the next one come from, if there's another call?
Yeah. Be happy to answer that.
Yeah.
So, um, anytime that we do have a primary ambulance out, uh, we actually don't staff our, uh, backup truck in-house. Um, we have made the effort to go above and beyond. This year to attempt to staff it, and have done a very successful job. Um, in the off chance that we weren't able to staff our secondary truck. Uh, at the exact same time that, uh, Belleville EMS station gets paged out, we have a mutual ambulance, mutual aid ambulance also paged out at the exact same time. So if there was ever a chance that we weren't able to form a crew with our secondary rig, it's already an ambulance in route. Whether that ambulance comes from Newglares, whether it comes from Petrona, the city of Madison. It's Oregon. Uh, whatever the closest available amb- ambulances. So in the case where we do have one ambulance in Newglares and one here in the village, it would be operated exactly the same as it currently is.
Because the network that's in place is cohesive and we already help each other. Um, you know, one of the things that, you know, we respond, for example, to calls in front. Mm-hmm. Right into places that already have three ambulances covering them, where this. There are days where we all do take care of each other, and the model that I always share with people is up until three years ago. The city of Fitchburg and the city of Verona and the town of Verona. Population at that time, thirty-five, thirty-six thousand. Had two ambulances covering, you know, their territory, which based on. Call volumes, they eventually increased to having a third ambulance, but. We think that the model is quite comparable, the communities are kind of equidistant to Fitchburg and Verona. We think that having, um, the emergency medical technicians on each respective fire department. Helps support that response and that. You know, while that staffed ambulance is going back and forth in your scenario, um, you know, where ambulances are shared between communities. Medical care is still being rendered by, um, scene personnel within a matter of a minute or two, because. The Newglares Fire Department and the Belleville Fire Department both have the last two years invested in. Versus the medical responder EMT program, so we know that there will be medical care ongoing on scene. Uh, as that ambulance is coming, it's again structured very similar to Fitchburg and Verona did, providing that service delivery, that's kind of always basis on, if that's all.
Also on the board, if comments, questions?
I just want, would like to touch on what Connie said, I think it's a little premature, I, I. To be honest, I didn't appreciate finding out on Facebook.
Mm-hmm.
That this was happening. I think there should have been a little bit more. Transparency with this, it's just not fair to our board, our village, because you know. Things like that, especially when they're blasted on social media, people panic.
Yep, for sure.
So. That's my only comment at this point.
Yeah.
Just. Transparency.
Back to the ambulances, so is the oldest ambulance still gonna be retired when the new one comes in?
Um, no, I would, we would not retire that ambulance, we would, um, definitely keep that ambulance to have as a backup.
So there's still life in it then?
Mm-hmm.
You have something?
This still covers my true was accident.
Yeah.
Yes.
That won't change.
A little bit of Oregon, a little bit of Brooklyn.
That will not change.
Also from the board?
I'll just comment that this is. I think the way we should be going, instead of adding EMS districts, because it's hard enough to buy. Volunteers and even paid staff to staff these. I think this will be the way of the future, not. Here, but all over, that, uh, services will be consolidating and, and, uh. Trying to buy new service app. Adding it in service.
And I think. This is an innovative grant, is that what you call it, innovation, innovation grant? The potential for ten million dollars to develop this combined district is. It's pretty substantial.
That's up to ten million dollars per year from a municipality, they have a formula that they use to figure out what the amount is, um, so. There is up to ten million available, but I think the key part there is that there is state money available for to buy things that we would already have to buy. Which is a really exciting opportunity.
Are we able to apply for this ten million from now until twenty thirty, or is our, X number years and you're done?
No, that's my understanding of it, this just opened a few weeks ago, um, and it's. Goes through twenty thirty in terms of payments per year, up to ten million per year. Um, I spoke with state representatives, uh, of this program today, and we talked through the formula, it's a hundred and fifteen percent of your cost. From the prior year, um, another thing to think about too is this could have not only just involved EMS, it could also involve fire. Um, so that's something to think about as we go along, um, in this planning process to get. One district over everybody that could help with some of those major costs that these departments are looking at, regardless of if they get the grant or not. Um, but yes, my understanding is it goes through twenty thirty.
I, I think there's two distinct financial advantages from. Current numbers of the district's perspective, right, that Belleville elects or not. You'll notice the per capita rate charge from the initial budget that we had developed a couple of weeks ago. Prior to this conversation, emerging interest. The current projection is that we can lower that per capita by ten dollars per person.
Maybe my question is, are we gonna lower taxes?
So, the, that, the burden will lower by ten dollars per person because we have the exponential gain. With the village and the town, um, residents being part of the district, that's a significant increase in commitment for them. On your side of the ledger, it brings your, um, cost to administer the service and now have two fully staffed. Ambulances within a few minutes of the village, which you don't have today, you have one. Um, bringing that to your per capita goes down, the other thing, and you know, we can talk in theory about grant dollars, but the way that that would look in practice. Is you already have in front of you, um, and I think the EMS district budget meeting is next week. You know, we know on the horizon are things like. At least, you know, one ambulance. Power load, um, structures. Heart monitors, defibrillators, other equipment, that quickly the tally on that, right, really adds up, so those are equipment purchases that were regardless of whether the nuclearist partnership happens or not. Those are costs the village of Belleville is going to incur. The question is, do you want to absorb, you know, all of that on your own, or if you invest into this type of a. Regional approach with the chance that the state comes in to take that off of your burden, that's money you don't have to levy, that's money you don't have to borrow, and money we know you're going to have to spend. Regardless of whether there's. A bigger district or the same district moving forward, that's an expense that's already there, because that equipment has reached, you know, its end of life status, so. To our vantage point, you know, we think a lot of the selling points potentially. Is fact. They might only deliver we have to that state money is by working through this type of ownership, perhaps on that, we don't.
Sounds like there's some economies of scale and. But it. It have impacted service levels.
So. Have you guys studied at all what the, the impact of the budget would be once you got everything up and running, if they were, as if they were part of the district? Because we are. Diluting the amount that, that municipality currently is responsible for, but then we're adding. On liabilities because there will be an additional ambulance, an additional. Shop, basically whatever that looks like in the future, because I imagine you're not, are always gonna live. Out of the fire department over there. So. There, there are gonna be additional costs along with, you know, the potential savings, if you guys looked at that at all, or?
I mean, I think the, you wanna answer first, but if I, I'd take it first, Greg, and then if you wanna follow up. I, I think that's the homework process to come in, and this phase two, the first first phase is figuring out twenty twenty-six, I. The phase two that we've already shared, um, with the village administrator and trustees that we've talked with, is gonna have to comprise and emerge from some type of a. Work group consisting of representatives of the communities who are interested. That I think is going to inform the eventual application to the state. I don't know that we make an assumption on a need for a new building, there's gonna be a lot that will. Shake out, I think in the next year, you know, on the nuclearist side of things that we just don't know today, but a year from now, I think we're gonna be in a stronger position. I think that, um, for the equipment side of things, just in terms of ambulances and equipment, that's all stuff that. We believe is super fair game through the state process to just have the state come in and pay for it. On the operating side of things, that's the capital side, on the operating side of things. We've designed a budget for next year that reflects the round-the-clock staffing in both stations, and we've done it based on a conservative projection that we have. No help coming whatsoever. From the existing Newglares staffing capacity that's there, we already know that's not true because several of them. Have reached out from the fire department to say they want to be a part of this, so we built kind of a, I'll call it a conservative worst-case staffing model that informs that seventy dollars per capita, so. I think on the operating side of things, we have a pretty good sense that. If that's the universe that we're dealing with, we think that that's kind of where that will be in on the capital side, we're open to remedy that with the. The grant that we would look to this work group to help. Develop that application for.
And the current grant that you have, is that gonna be covering the, the work group that you're talking about, figuring out what the cost is gonna be?
Yeah, uh, so the current grant we have is to study services, which will be continuing, we have an EMS steering committee set up, um, and we have the ability to add in representatives to that committee now that the, the study focus may be realigned here. I think the committee will be meeting later this year, and that's definitely a discussion we'd have at that point, uh, with the committee and with Southwest Regional Planning, uh, where it goes, but we still very much are pursuing the study and obviously want it to benefit our future plans.
So are we looking to, uh, approve this resolution?
You can do the resolutions tonight, uh, if you guys are in favor of the resolution, then I'll just add to the consent agenda on next meeting, and then as it's routine. You'll just approve it, but I want more or less what I need from you guys, and what Gary and Shelley need from you is. Do you guys give your blessings to this to forward, and then for staff or for the board hybrid to be part of a work group next year to go up next steps?
I'll make a motion that we. Prove the concept. Of the, uh. Medical services agreement between the village of Newglares, the town of Newglares. The Belleville, should be Matros and Exeter Fire and EMS District.
Exactly.
You have a comment?
Yes. Um, your village board, you say that they think this is great?
They wanted to approve it.
Okay, and then. Why are we, do we need new ambulances, buildings?
It's gotta be.
That hasn't been determined yet.
That's what the work group needs to be determined.
Okay.
Other discussion from the board? All those in favor? Uh, opposed? Motion for this.
I will put this resolution on consent agenda. For approval next Tuesday. It's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For telling the town.
I'm a little late.
That's okay, actually, before you go, have. Has the town approved this?
Yes, we have, yes, and it's agree.
So if you could.
Yeah.
Someone can just forward that to us, so we can.
Uh, Josh, time to turn this off.
Yeah, just wanna have a.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Audience.
It's our quarters. Actually, it's a different chair.
Hey, moving on, annual consultant review for building inspection.
Your presentation was attached, first. Put it back in. Chris, Mike?
Uh, I'm Mike Parrot, I'm the director. Of Inspection Services for General Engineering.
Chris Michael's. Major Inspector, day and a inspector.
Uh. I'll just go through the, I presume that. Most of you know we are, but you may not know everything about us, so. Work my way through, if you have questions, as I go through it. Yeah. Ask. So just a little quick background on general engineering itself, so, um. We started as a company in, uh, nineteen twelve. So we've been around. For. A. Long time, uh, as the name would kinda indicate, started out as an engineering company in, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, is actually when they started. Uh, building inspection, and it was just, uh, a couple of guys. And very few communities. Drew to about ten-ish, um, and probably about sixty to seventy communities, stayed that way for, uh, quite a while. And then, um, over time, as, um. You know, inspectors retired, um, more communities reached out and the inspection department. Drew, um, currently this. We are over, uh, about three hundred and forty municipalities that we work in, and that's, um, range-wise, um. You know, we're up above, um. Ross, and then kind of worked down through the center of the state, you know. Basically, the I ninety corridor. Out. Rock, green, or also over in, uh. Lafayette, Iowa. Then kind of work back up through Monroe, so a good, a good chunk of the state. Um, specifically, we've worked in, uh, Belleville. I believe since August of two thousand eight. So. Um, in that time, in that time, we've seen, you know, boards change, administration change, so we've, we've been here for quite a bit. Um, I guess the time when you guys didn't, there wasn't a lot going on, so today when there's. Like. We offer a full suite of inspection services, so everything from, uh, plan review of buildings of, of any size, variety. Uh, to, you know, all the way through all the residential services, so anything as small as a. Deck to, you know, full house. Um, our biggest project currently is. Probably, uh, be a Amazon facility, so. We did plan review on that, so we have capabilities, uh, staff-wise, we have about, uh, fifty-five people in the building inspection department, some of that's administrative. Uh, like, I guess I would consider myself administrative. I was a building inspector, but I don't do too much inspecting anymore, so. Uh. Yeah, that kind of, it's just like, so that's an overview of what we do, we also help a lot of our communities with, uh, just some oddball things, uh, in fact, you have a, we're looking at a. Down here, eleven East Main, I did inspection on that, so condition assessments, those types of things as well. So as far as, um, Chris goes, he's your primary full-time. He's here. If they go to, and we, uh, all of our inspectors, we provide them, you know, backups if they're on vacation, they get sick. Those types of things, also if there's a need for specialty. This is background is plumbing, we have other guys that maybe their background is electrical. Um, I came from a structural side, so that would be my, you know, for if I was the guy, that'd be my particular. Uh, expertise. Um. Inspection types, you know, I kind of touched on it quickly, you know, all commercial and all residential. Pretty much everything you would think of. With those. One of the items that we do have. We've developed over the years, when we first, I'm sure when we first started here, that predates me, but, um. We used to carry everything around in a. Milk cart, crate. I mean, it was all. You know, you'd take out the crate for that community, you'd use it, you'd put it back, whatever your crates were, that's what you had, and everything was, uh, you know, on paper. Now we've developed, uh, FileMaker is the platform that we use, so it's a, provides digital, so we can, uh, you know, enter inspections in there. Um. Emails from it, permits issuance. Um. We provide, uh, community access portal, so if you want to see kind of, you know, somebody calls up, a lot of times, you know. That somebody have a, something going on, you know, one, two, three, Blueberry Lane, um. You can look it up and say, yep, they have a permit, or you can see where it's at in the inspection process. Um, so that, that's all available to us right now, yes.
The clerk's department does have access to that community portal, and, um, I actually use it quite a bit, so it's been really helpful. Yeah. Had access to that for looking up information. Building permits, we've had quite a few come in last year, and. I. It's been actually a really nice upgrade.
Yeah, necessarily can have access to it.
They like that, they can, just, you know, if you give them, can they have permission to that, they can. They like that, they can, you know, if you give them permission to that, they can, you know, when you get all the information they need instead of having to come and try to pull the paper files. So that's, that's been super helpful.
And it gives Chris more time to do his job and less time answering our questions, which I should be appreciating.
And something we've actually started to kind of piggyback on, we just mentioned there, we've because of the volume and you want, my goal is I want the building inspectors doing building inspector stuff, less administrative stuff. So we've developed in the last year and a half, permit tech position. So they can run down, you know, if somebody's not, you know, we're, we're still rolling it out, but it's, it's been working really well. Is, you know, somebody submits a permit, a lot of times they're missing, you know, portions or quite a bit of the information. Some of it's not accurate, so they can, they'll check all of that stuff and they work with different inspectors and it's, it's super handy. The people we have are really detailed, they're, they're on it, so that, that's been great. I always, I always think it's kind of interesting, so page through, there's a, I pulled up permits from twenty-three. So this year is definitely up, so in twenty-three you had a total of one hundred and thirty-three permits and twenty-four, one hundred and sixty-four. And as of nine thirty of September, so thirty-sixth September, you were already at a hundred and eighty-eight with fifty-five of those being new homes and fourteen duplexes. And you just had a batch come in, right? Other, another twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four units, mix of duplex and single family. Any kind of spells out, I mean, you have alterations this year, additions, twenty-eight, seventeen fences, fifteen roofing. You know, it just kind of goes down the, down the list. I always think that's kind of interesting information. There's page through to the back versus a nice picture of Chris.
I couldn't hit there.
Steve Gauthers, one of the first building inspectors, he also helped. Presidential, Josh Crook. He worked with us, but he's been a great addition. And then Dan Scale is our, head of our commercial electric, do a lot of that as well. Do you have any specific questions? Be happy to try to answer them.
Entirely specific, I was curious as to like, how many things you find in these new constructions that are like, hey, guys got to fix that. Yeah, there's generally, I mean, a lot of good stuff, but yeah, there's, there's stuff we find. Whether it's a deck or a new house or in between, we always find something.
I know out here, I was, when I went with Chris and, you know, part of it is, it's, and it's, it's gotten to be more, not just in Belleville, but everywhere. It's a language barrier that really has changed in a lot of the last ten years is, you know, a lot more Hispanic workers. And then in addition to that, of a lot of the communities, there's also the addition of a lot of Amish. So that's always, it, you know, and they're just like everybody else, no different than traditional, you think of traditional builders. There's good and there's bad, but it does add another level because they, they look at things slightly different and they interpret things differently. And I know down there it said Cinco, you know, it's under trusses. So they're, you know, they're writing stuff in Spanish, so it's just, it's, once you can get it across to them what they need to do. They're, they're good to work with, but it's just an added layer. Sometimes they don't, they don't know, right? They don't know what they don't know, so we try to educate them on that. Always easy.
There's usually a guy that, one of them that speaks English.
All right, anybody else got any questions?
Tommy, he waving back there?
Did you say you were, you were a full-time inspector?
Yep. Not here.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say here isn't here. Okay.
Well, it's getting to be almost full-time here.
How many of the houses over west side? About myself, okay, west side, have you go, have you inspected, how many? Every one of them?
Probably.
Every one?
Probably a dump plant or another.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there's a couple of us that are out there, but.
Thank you.
Actually, I, sort of my question is how does that happen? Do you go through every single house or do you just go over a few at a time of each bunch?
Well, I mean, they're doing, there's twenty houses right now and fifteen duplexes going on at the same time. So it's kind of, they'll call in like five or six inspections where they're at different phases. If they're, you know, if they're ready for footing, I'm looking at probably five footings at the same time. And then they, they're kind of staggered, we'll get into different sections if it's rough work or finals or. So there's eleven inspections total in, also looking at footings, foundations, framing, electrical, plumbing, to the final to insulation. Eleven.
Eleven hope per house.
Yeah, eleven in theory.
Yeah.
Provided they do it correct the first time, you don't have to go back, which quite often. And kind of just add to that, so they're, they are responsible for calling in the inspection. But then, you know, in a case like this, this is there almost every day now anyway. So it's kind of a rolling.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
And the old business, discuss and consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six, awarding the sale of three million five hundred and ninety-five thousand general application promissory note series twenty twenty-five A.
Right, so Kayla, our financial advisor from Elris is online. The only thing I'll say before she starts is that the actual number is on the resolution. That's the second item in your whole package. First thing, it's a sale report for the owners, stable or cliff, and then it's the resolution, it's the resolution number, the five, the three, five, four.
Yep. You want to add? Can everybody hear me? Okay, perfect. I'm just gonna share my screen just so you could see what I'm seeing when I'm following along. I'm going to start with twenty twenty-five A, which is the tax exempt note that was sold today. Very successful sale, we had six total bids with the low bidder of being Baker's Bank out of Madison, Wisconsin, with the low bid of three point four nine percent. And then the high bid was three point nine seven, so the spread was pretty large actually on this one. High bid would have incurred an additional hundred twenty-two thousand of interest throughout the life of the note. So very happy with the spread that came in on this one. And the reason why the, the numbers differ on your agenda versus the resolution is that we were able to downsize the size of the note due to a premium bid received today. There's a number of attachments that are included on this, the bid tabulations, sources and uses of funds, kind of all of those tax impact schedules you've seen before. And now I'm having some, okay, there we go. And so really table one outlines our preliminary financing plan, which you reviewed at the pre-sale meeting. And then kind of where this fell on the final. And this one shows both the taxable and the tax exempt, even though I will review this again when we look at the tax exempt. And so original issue size was three million five hundred and ninety-five thousand, we were able to downsize to three million five hundred and forty-five thousand. The interest rates came in lower and I will talk about what that means on a refunding basis, but overall on your amortization basis, the savings was about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars over the life of the note as compared to our pre-sale estimates. And the reason why the pre-sale estimates were a little high is at that point in time, interest rates were actually increasing. And so we took a light site or a light sale for a non-rated Wisconsin paper, a Moody's rating and added a conservative, I believe, point five percent interest rate to that. And then subsequently, we've seen rates come down, there's a Fed rate cut. And then obviously, the economy being what it is, rates have come down a little bit since we presented the pre-sale report. So if you're wondering why there was such a difference and there's such a large savings, well, it's great. It's just that the variability of rates continues and rates thankfully have come down since we spoke last. The impact of the financing plan, this is for the twenty twenty-five A and B altogether, is about twenty dollars and thirty-three cents per year on the average taxpayer or six hundred and nine dollars and ninety-four cents over the total life of the note. So for almost seven million dollars in borrowing, a pretty affordable impact on the average taxpayer. Now, two large pieces of the tax exempt financing were for refundings, refunding existing obligations, the twenty twenty-four D bank note and the twenty twenty-five, which are going to be now the twenty twenty-five A and B GO notes. And so overall, the future value cost savings of refunding just on the interest rate basis alone is ninety-seven thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars. So a great turnout to be able to save tax per dollars in almost a hundred thousand dollars by simply capitalizing on decreasing interest rates over time. We give you an all-in debt coverage, just to show that even with the additional debt, we are maintaining water and sewer debt. Coverage ratios on an all-in revenue and general obligation basis. And then there are some notes about the rate increases that were implemented in twenty twenty-five for both the water and sewer utility. Any questions on twenty twenty-five A? I will move on, if I can get out of the screen, at twenty twenty-five B. Twenty twenty-five B, we received four bids with the winning bid coming from Bach Financial Securities out of Wescott, out of Milwaukee with a low interest rate of four points seven four eight. And it's important to note that this is a higher interest rate that's tax exempt, primarily because one, there's always a large spread between taxable and tax exempt. Investors have to pay tax on tax, taxable issuances on their earnings from that. But also we've seen a lot of our traditional investors back out of the tax exempt or taxable world right now, given the fluctuation in interest rates. And so four bids is actually a really great number to receive. We've been seeing taxable or taxable bids come in much lower than that, less bids. And so this is pretty spot on as to where we were in planning rates because the, the interest rates haven't changed on the taxable side all that much. But also subsequent to the bid opening, because we did receive a premium bid, we were able to downsize this issue as well. So but both issues were subsequently downsizing saving taxpayer dollars due to just some changing interest rates. Again, just to take a look at the original issue size was three point three eight and we downsized to three point three five. This also included some refunding obligation analysis. And so on the, oh, this, it's the same exhibits, actually, I apologize. And so both of these notes at maximum, without it taking on any new debt, will save that ninety-seven thousand dollars. But we'll also be well within your capacity under Wisconsin statutes, which limits you to five percent of your equalized value of principal and outstanding debt at any point in time. This, we take a look forward of your kind of CIP all-in now through twenty thirty, combined existing and proposed. And so this will put you kind of at your max of your statutory debt limit, your all-in CIP, but understanding that prices and projects will fluctuate throughout time. And then, but will kind of send you over your internal debt limit of three point five percent for a couple of years between twenty-seven and thirty, should you not adjust any of the future CIP projects. Just was trying to land on one page, here we go. And so all of those CIP projects all in, important to note that those would just, now through twenty thirty would be about a six, seven and seven dollar impact on the average taxpayer throughout the life of those, which is twenty-four years. And so understanding that still, while you have projects coming up, you do have the capacity to borrow for those and still mitigate the impact to the average taxpayer. Any questions I can answer on A or B?
Unfortunately, approved resolution twenty-five dash twenty-six.
Thirty-second, Scott. Discussion. All those in favor, opposed, yes.
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Second.
Gary, second, and Shelley. Those in favor, opposed. Thank you.
Thanks Kayla. Have a great night.
Discuss and consider municipal facility project design concepts.
So I am not asking for any decisions tonight, but I am asking for direction. You guys received the presentation at the last board meeting from FGM Architects on kind of concepts that were presented that we laid out as part of the study. I am asking for direction from you guys on where you want me to see this go further. What kind of questions do you want me to ask? Is there a site that you're like, yeah, no, we're not doing that, take that off the table? Is there a different site that I have thought about? Is there a different alternative that you guys would like to look at? Like where do you want me to direct things to go? Because if we did approve it point blank, we didn't try to get anything funding difference, whatever, twenty million, something else is going to have to be cut in capital, which is straightforward, it's not possible. So from there, we have to have conversations on the side of the park, is it something different, is, what goes on? So I need direction from you guys so I can do capital. And so, just for me, yeah.
I actually would suggest for the time being, we table that. And along some of the operational issues in various departments and consider twenty million dollars is a lot of money. You need to consider perhaps a more modest.
So we've got three concepts, is behind the cemetery, the east of the cemetery, I should say. He is Sugar River Park, basically. And then where was C located again?
I'm in the new subdivision that's going to be across from Rainy.
Well, you can take Sugar River Park off this table. That one, we've, we've designed it for the sports groups. I don't think it's fair to throw a double decker building on top of the park.
I'm not convinced we need a public works building after talking to some of the public works.
I'm not convinced we need a public works building. After talking to some of the public works employees, they also say we do not need a building, they need a storage building. Because then they can rotate equipment for the seasons that they do not feel that the money needs to be spent on the building, and that's coming from the workers. Drew, have you heard that as well?
I would say I understand the perspective. I can imagine how those conversations went. I, I think there's some truth to it. I mean, some to talk, some storage, um, but, well, yeah, I, I would say with the acknowledgement that the storage is important for vehicles and equipment, um, a lot of what a public works building would be is, is storage. Yeah, the question of, that something needs to be done fairly soon.
But it doesn't have to be a new building.
No, they're not demanding new in China, absolutely not, they're not.
Other thing we need to consider is we're also talking of, you know, remodeling, making this building ADA accessible. So I think we do need to make a decision, are we gonna just continue to not have a non-ADA accessible building? Or are we gonna, is that kind of move just to remodeling of this building, which obviously then takes out some of the other options? But, uh, um, you know, and I, and I don't think we can just postpone indefinitely because we have to decide. So we have between parks and buildings, we have thirty-five million dollars, just to throw out a wrong number. So, you know, if we are gonna postpone these and go with the parks, then that obviously makes a decision. I think there are other options, you know, if we wanna do something with the building, maybe we just do Sugar River Park, you know, there's all kinds of things out there, so.
Well, the, the remodel proposal is like nine million dollars, I think a more modest remodel to bring us up to comply ADA compliance is worth looking at, but these proposals, the price tag is not realistic.
How are we not ADA compliant? I have to, somebody's told me that.
They can't come downstairs.
The bathrooms are actually not ADA compliant either. We had a, one time before I started working here, they had a put money aside to remodel those bathrooms and every model was never happened, but they're not ADA compliant. We don't actually have a ramp um, in the back. I mean, we have a ramp in the back, but it's not functional very well. The front's not exactly ADA compliant.
You can't get upstairs.
Yeah, I mean.
Can't come downstairs and talk to them?
No, like, you can't get upstairs.
We have, we have a word of progress thing, and I, my thought was somebody coming in, I'm like, why can't you just come downstairs? There's seven of us that work in this building and one of us had, uh, knee surgery last week, couldn't get up towards desk for months. So, I mean, you have to be considerate of everybody.
I mean, we get dinged by election commission, right, every time?
The election commission does ding us, uh, not awfully, but we did get dinged. Now, we are planning on moving the with the move of the boardroom over to one thirty South Vine, we'll move the, you know, that building over there is gonna ding us last with the elections commission. But that's a process.
But, uh, like, some public safety concerns, like, are we gonna try and be able to have a barrier between, like, somebody to be able to walk right into the office, stuff like that? Um, I think you could do quite a bit of that stuff. But then, barrier here, like, because unless, if this doesn't have to be the work, and you can move the boardroom over to thirty South Vine, we transfer, this is now office space, we put some type of ramp or something, like, we could do a lot of work here. You're just gonna have to then be realizing that for a long time, we're gonna be doing, staff's gonna be here, and then the boardroom's gonna be there. That's the compromise that you guys would be making, which toys fine, just that's wanting to know what the, uh, consequences are. For public works, what I really prefer in my eyes is maybe an addition in the back where you can actually do a drive-through approach instead of having to back in on a state highway and adding a little bit, like, or just gates or something like that. That way you can just drive in and out, not having to back in on the state highway in the winter in the cold, all that kind of stuff. But I think there's definitely things that we could do that are not.
I mean, if we want to get something more modest, but what, what I saw.
I mean, don't we have room down by the sewer plants? We could put a building down there.
Hard to know, just then with new equipment that eventually may need to happen. You don't wanna build a building and then, you know, hey, guess what? A new operation that goes there.
I think I'll know more about sewer plant after they get the sewer study done next year, so.
Yeah, if that's a direction you wanna go, like, updating these two buildings, that's something that you'd be more comfortable with then. I can start reapproaching, you have to kind of really come up with that design layout for this building and for that to make it functional, knowing that a new building isn't gonna happen.
I mean, this, this proposal is no different than what we've had with the, you know, the two parks, the, the pricing, the cost for those two parks is downing. And when these numbers came out for this, and I did participate in, in a couple of the meetings with FGM before, and this is just unbelievable, these numbers. So I would agree that if we could come with something
A little more modest.
Yeah, a little more modest, a little toned down from this. Um, you know, I know some people think the village hall should not be on Main Street, you know, but I also the three locations, I still think the cemetery is the best, but, uh, um, at least you can see it, you know, you, you're gonna have to go try to find it if we go to Reamy Road with it. And the park is definitely out. I agree a hundred percent with Shelly on that. We spent all that time and effort trying to satisfy everybody with the, coming up with a sports complex and now, and then we suggested we wanna put a bit of a new village hall and public works building there. I think that's a bad idea, so.
Yeah, it would, it would look really bad.
Yeah.
To the public.
Yeah.
I mean, it does make sense to sort of have municipal buildings with near the other municipal structures, but.
I need first.
I think it was first.
You're on the thing, so.
Ian, Ian, you can go.
You go ahead, you're.
Okay, I'm not on the thing. I'm, I'm thinking Jason. The, the quotes we got back for the parks and the parks and the buildings, for sure, just, they're nuts. Um, like ridiculous nuts. Like, I don't know if they're planning on building the buildings like Greek Revival with cultured marble or what, but like, you could do something much, much cheaper. I am one hundred percent certain. Um, I think like public works, yeah, whether you build a storage building somewhere else and keep public works there or not, like, that building has nothing but deferred maintenance. Um, and then the lot itself is more valuable than anything. I mean, especially with the way everything's been, um, developed or redeveloped around here. Like, getting them off that lot from an economic development standpoint is a huge deal. Um, like, I don't think they need the precast concrete huge forty-foot ceiling, like, in county garage kind of garage. But at the same point, like, I think if you just add a storage building, then you're committing to just leaving that twenty thousand dollar pole barn on top of multi-million dollar property to be an eyesore and not be large enough for what operations are gonna be. That's.
That's what I keep coming back to also is.
Like, this building, I could care less. Like, yeah, it'll need to be renovated. Doesn't need to be renovated to like multimillion dollars, no. Um, but, I mean, it could be a hell of a lot more useful than it is right now. Like, just kind of shove village hall and an old bank, it didn't change anything. Um, and so, yeah, there's ways to remodel this building that would make it a lot more efficient, useful for everybody. Maybe actually use the second floor to it. We're on the, the on the inexpensive side of the tracks over here. Nobody wants to be on this side of Main Street. They wanna be on that side of Main Street, because that side of Main Street's got the water back. And so yeah, we move out of here i- if it made financial sense, but it's not going to, so, whatever. But moving public works is like, for sure. And I don't think.
But what would you put there?
There?
Yeah.
Well, it's easy, multi-use condos or apartments with, uh, retailers.
For retail.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's a, it's a gimmick.
That's kind of where I keep coming back, is we do respoop some degree of the money when that property gets.
Like, that, that twenty thousand dollar sixty-year-old pole barn could end up being a twenty million dollar real estate.
Could.
Could, and then flip planes.
Uh, no, it's nice. Uh, elevated enough from it that it, it is far beyond the one hundred-year watermark. Um, or at least could be built up to that. So I'm not worried about that. Um, but yeah, and I mean, I really don't, the, the numbers we got back are just crazy pants.
So Cross.
And it is a buck.
So just, we had our WCMA project final meeting today. Cross Plains Administrator told me they got their, uh, new village hall on their board agenda like someday or tomorrow. Uh, seventeen thousand square feet, or seven million. Ours is thirty-eight thousand, thirty-eight, thirty-eight thousand square feet with public works in there for twenty million. That's the peril. That's somebody who just went to the market for just publics, or just, uh, the little tall.
How many square feet was it?
Seventeen thousand square feet.
For seven million?
Seven million.
So, yeah, my construction costs are ridiculously high.
Yeah.
I remember what we told the engineer chair was like, her dream wish list. So when we asked, what would be your ideal work? They asked us what would be our ideal work situation? Every single department told them what would be the ideal work. So do we have to work in the ideal? Obviously not, we don't now. So would we like to work somewhere that a little more functional for the next thirty years? I think that would be beneficial to everybody in the village and not just from a work standpoint, but from a safety standpoint.
Have we gotten any, like, just basic estimates as to what it would cost to make this ADA accessible?
To do.
A little bit of a facelift?
Not the facelift, um, to do.
Make it ADA accessible.
To put the elevator in, to do all the things was nine million for this building.
That was from FGM.
That was from FGM, but that was at the second floor upstairs, the elevator. The elevator is pricey. Um, so if you get rid of that, you get rid of the full second floor, you don't use the top floor, you barely use the bottom floor.
Yeah, seven point seven million here for existing village hall.
Seven point seven.
Tho- those, those two numbers for existing village hall and existing public works are to remodel the existing buildings, right?
Yeah, but that's a.
Which is still outrageous.
Yeah, that's a massive rip down.
So. You know, I, I think new village hall and public works are smart future planning and it needs to be planned and to happen. Yes, excessive sticker shack.
I don't think we can, that kind of amount of money we have to.
I'll just point out, because I run the elections, and not you, unless you're going for a binding resolution like the school district did, you cannot go to referendum. A non-binding referendum is not, the state has told us, we don't put those on. So if you just went to the people and said, we're thinking, we have the money, we're thinking about spending it, what do you guys think? You, that's a non-binding resolution, you can't put that on an election. The state told us no. A binding resolution, you only go to if you need to go to. And my understanding with the capital projects was we wouldn't need to go. I mean, that's not my vision, but, um, I just would be very cautious when we start talking about throwing resolutions on elections because there's, there's sidelines and rules on what and how you can put on, on the, on the, on the ballot.
Well, unless we send twenty millions of all cans of tomatoes.
Is, yeah, is it possible to do one of these concepts? Say, do either village hall or public works first, and then the other facility?
Like you.
As an addition onto it later? Does it make sense to do that at all?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I'm sure you could do it, but does it make sense to do it?
Why do they have to be attached?
You don't have to, but if you aren't attached and you're right next to each other, you have to have two, um, like HVAC systems, two plumbing systems, two of everything.
You don't have to be side by side, you can be two different areas.
Yeah, true. If you, totally. Uh, the only reason, financial reason why it tapped is you save money on those costs, but if you don't care about that part of it.
And they're combined on the same site because it's not like we have all kinds of land that we already own, so we'd have to, you know, other than, those are three spots that we own land or will own land, and we don't have to run by anything, you know, purchase any land, so.
Which makes me scratch my head. Why is the cemetery one the most expensive when we own that land? But regardless.
Highway access.
So, you know, one of my concerns about that location is just and it probably applies to all of them. Now, is it landlocked in the fact that if we need to expand a little bit more? Uh, you know, we need more outdoor storage or something for public works, and we expand into the upper, the northeast corner, or is that wastewater or stormwater management yet?
Oh, that would need to be factored in.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just envisioning other piles of stuff.
I still think we have three projects, really. We have Sugar River Park, we have community park, and then we have this campus. Uh, public works and village hall. I, at, at some point, like I said, or was mentioned, Gabe, or I think we need to prioritize these at some point. And like I said, I, I know whether that's here or it goes to you know, committee finance or public works or parks or whatever, and we need to figure out what our priority item is here. Cause, uh, but I, I, like I said, I wholeheartedly agree, the price on this is ridiculous, but, uh, um, and I think we need to do that sooner than later, because if we wanna try to finagle all these projects, then FGM needs to come back with some more realistic numbers, I think, so.
You have to go with FGM. Can you get any other recommendations for prices?
You can.
Yeah, put it out for bids, we'll be done next.
Well, but we gotta have a sign if we're gonna put it off a bid, so. FGM was out there when, when we hired these guys, that was a bid process, if I remember correctly, or we, it made me out of bid, but we interviewed some, so, you know, all they did, they haven't designed what these buildings would look like, you know, or signs or plans that you could put out for, for bid. We're not even close to that yet, so.
Um, we could scrap that, go to a, get an actual, so they did the conceptual design. Uh, we could have them do actual design balls, everything of this building and adding maybe like garage doors for public works, updating their restrooms to that.
Yeah, but, yeah, they're not ADA anything.
What they say that best is not acceptable for a, uh, items like that, that have tos, and come back to you guys with different pricing.
Yeah, I'd wanna see a number for like.
Uh.
So how did we get these designs? Is it just one place we said, design us a?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we just.
So can't we talk to a couple others, saying, are you willing to submit a design?
Well, they're gonna have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll cost.
It's gonna be a pretty heavy cost, and then it's.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
Take a lot of time, because what FGM did was not with staff and said, hey, for the next thirty years, how many more staff are you gonna have? What office space do you need? What storage space do you, for elections, what do you need? Municipal core, what do you need? And then from that, they built a, this is what you need based on that square footage wise. And so the next person's gonna wanna do a whole different system for that, so it's gonna take a while. Uh, totally, you could go take this to a different contractor and say, hey, this is what we want. Are you gonna be, what's the price? Are we out of the poll bar or not? Uh, I think for a new building, you're gonna be spending that. So I don't think you're gonna be too far off, but.
So for the two parks, Sugar River and Community Park, we approved those design, conceptual designs, so uh, MSA is now doing.
They're just putting together the final report with, so not with, and cost estimates are not gonna change, I'm guessing, on that, just because
we haven't taken it out to bid, those again, and they're. So not within cost estimates are not gonna change, I'm guessing, on that just because we haven't taken it out to bid. Those again, and they're they're estimates, right?
Yeah.
And things can be pulled out of there. You know, it just was the.
Right now we have four phases. You could do twelve, like that's you guys make those decisions. But the goal of that project is is really just this is where the parks in the world. And so if somebody comes in and says, hey, I wanna put blank here, you know, two years from now, it's gonna be a shelter. But how about this things? If you wanted to get different architectural, you're probably gonna spend ten thousand dollars to get it back. A full study that bring somebody in here and say, hey, we need to remodel this building, it's not gonna approve a new building, but they will approve a remodel. Here's the seven things that have to happen. You need to have better security, you need to have ADA, you need to have that, you need to blah blah blah. Make that happen.
And again, for this building, I think that it'd be options, just using just this floor, or if we wanna use the second floor in the basement, then, you know, obviously an elevator comes in on that and they have cross estimate, so. So maybe it's option A and option is out the elevator, it's this far and B is the entire building or something like that, so.
You know, a question, if we do anything substantial uh more than lipstick at public works, doesn't make any sense to do it on that property? Financially.
I don't think so.
I agree.
No.
That's my. I mean, I I come back to that pop property. A much better use than the government's, you know, municipal building on it. If you wanna do anything of any substance at public works, that building is just. Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
You're not selling it.
No.
If you're gonna put any money into anything, I probably wouldn't do it on that.
Would you, if we just did a public works new building, would behind the cemetery be a valid place for that since it's not a public space that's a, space for storage? And you wouldn't have to use the entire cemetery, you could keep it open for future growth.
I still think you should have gone back to.
Where's their exit? Where do they price it? Up to highway or?
Um, we had talked with Petrie.
Just street or?
We would actually probably cut one of the spots on the current cemetery now and then add one a little bit on the other end of the cemetery closer to the pivot bably. And then use that for Petrie's development and then. Or.
Perfect, because the state highway allows so many entrances. Out by adding an entrance to his development. And then we would have uh entrance through the cemetery to ours or off of Greenview, whatever. Um and then we could cut two of the dirt paths. Coming off the highway and that. And so the D O T would go for that because we'd be cutting out. One driveway.
I think it's a concern. You probably don't want residents coming back there for elections or bombing that like that's about it, sir. But if it's an office space, it's just our dump trucks are garbage. Do we have that? I think public works was really the main reason why we need to do this because their building is bad, but and also like. What is it combined?
Then you get any nice building, like if you just had. An insulated metal building with like a partial brick facade, have the garage doors and everything, H VAC, everything. Your problem would be, I don't know what the hell they they put in their cost estimate, but it's bonkers.
I mean, and again, I think. If we only use part of that, because I think that's the other concern that's been expressed is we take all that land, and I know Drew doesn't like cemeteries, but uh, you know, we take that all that land that was donated or, you know, put towards cemetery. And then we've talked about there's a process to uh to take care of that, but we only use part of that for a public works building at the this ideally, I think this is a great location for the for the village hall downtown, you know, I hate to see us move that out of town. So, yeah, the building needs some work, but I think that's the route we go is maybe look at just. Public works either at site A or site C and remodel this building because I I think that with all the time and effort that's been spent on developing those parks, I hate to just see us those go to the bottom of the list again now. So. We've kind of made some promises, even though they have, you know, we haven't promised, promised, but you know, I think most people in town think that something's gonna happen with those parks, so.
I think operation would be better to have public works over about wastewater treatment plan in the yard anyway.
I agree.
It's not gonna affect the the park design at all. I mean, the area that we infringed upon, if we infringed upon was parking area. So there wasn't, it wasn't any of the fields or any of the dimensions that would affect the.
Well, I can, I don't agree that it's at the park. I agree, it would be at the other side we were looking.
At the cemetery.
No. On Remi Road, the other side of Remi Road, out in the park, so.
Okay, I wanna propose a question then. If if we're just gonna do a separate facility for public works or city hall and not combine them, we don't need as large a plot of land. Yes, I know we own the cemetery, but very near that, what is, who owns the the green space to the north of the E M S building? And west of uh like the Drainery.
Oh, where are we always landing?
And it's south of Lake Ridge Bank.
Yeah, landmark.
I thought you had said.
Who?
You know, the one ten.
You don't.
It's gonna build on.
Yours is a car wash.
That's what I think he's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's. I don't, I'm just looking at the maps of that.
Dane County. Yeah, that's uh landmark.
Mister President.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Teresa and I just wanted to let you know the lot that is in between land uh Lake Ridge Bank and the old car wash is owned by Jim Niffen.
Okay. Throwing out a potential alternate location for.
Good for you.
Something smaller.
Um, two things. First off, we're talking twenty million dollars. And we have to put in a five hundred thousand dollar cow pass and sewer and water and probably a new water tower coming down the road. We've got lots of things we've gotta worry about. And then my other thing is, who donated the land for the cemetery?
Her.
Or why did he donate?
Cemetery.
For the cemetery. All I got.
Has it been earmarked for cemetery or?
Well, it's dedicated.
Dedicated, he gave donated.
Again, there are ways that you can undo that, but.
Right.
It's like we had to do with to get the two lots over here for the park on the west side. You know, there's a project you'd have to go.
Right, right.
There are single lots we could try to buy for village hall. You're probably not big enough for public works because of the, you know, yard stuff and the driveways in and out of the hotel. I think if I was to give you a lot. My personal is you do it, you do public works and then you remodel this. I think you could do this, take some of my our major security concerns, the bathrooms, ADA.
Well, do this and like, is it a bandaid do this or do this thing, you stay in here, do this.
If you're doing this, is that you're staying here for thirty years? We gotta be honest that that includes one thirty South Vine for the next thirty years. That's the boardroom. Once we move the boardroom over there, it's not coming back. Because the village, as it grows, it's going to just village hall and it's gonna just happen. This room for all the aisles and.
Well.
Magic, all the magic.
That may be the case, but if we would remodel this building and use all three floors, then we could have.
Even with that, it's the remodel that they did the that they didn't.
Crazy pants did.
Yeah, that one didn't include a boardroom in here. It included the boardroom at one thirty South Vine. There's plenty of things that we could do here in village hall that would just take up the space that we're just not doing because we don't have the room to do it. That it's gonna need to get done at some point. And this is actually, uh speaking from an election standpoint, this is a complicated space to run an election in. Like the fact that we have to stretch it back and then into the food pantry.
Wouldn't you be running elections over there?
We will, which is why I'm saying I don't think we bring anything back here. If, you know, if we're saying we're gonna be here for thirty years, let's just, let's do it in a way that makes it functional for the next thirty years.
So based on their discussion, next are required for play, I would need twelve thousand. This building usable is six thousand.
I mean, there's no doubt in my mind, we're gonna need a new public works building or a I want, or because we continue to grow and we need to add a third sterling. We don't have a spot to put that third sterling truck in there right now. It won't fit in the doors on the south end of that building, so you know. And I agree. That's some prime real estate there. If somebody comes in that's got some money and with commercial or real estate uh retail and then condos or something like that, I mean, that's a with the river right there, that's.
Oh, yeah.
That that's been being said for years and I don't think anybody's come because housing market now the housing market is better, but they also see that building and we really have not had any plans what we would do if somebody came and said, I wanna buy that building. You know, because we're gonna tear it down and start all over, so.
If somebody came and said that, we'd be having a different conversation.
Yeah, well.
This is a theoretical buyer.
A theoretical buyer isn't gonna show up and wait three years in order for us to build a new facility so they can buy it. So we have to vacate first in order to make it available.
Yeah, I mean, that whole, that whole corner, I mean, and that, you know, I'm gonna, I'm sure this will be out on Facebook, but you know, the fire station, that whole corner has been talked about over the years about things to be done there, but you know, and fire department doesn't wanna move, I understand that. Um but at at some point, you know, that whole block is or that corner block is is prime real estate there, so.
Yeah. I think two people.
We have an open tid right now too, in like down here.
Right.
We actually have the ability to do incentives as well. And we own the land. And so it wouldn't be that hard to put together a package to entice people to come here if we weren't using it. Never done any of that, so.
Just a little information, please, on Pass Up C with Art Meadows. Is that involve purchasing land from Petrie?
There, we don't know what the price would be, so that would be probably a little bit more expensive because we have to buy.
So it is, does involve purchasing lands. So I guess my question then becomes. You know, as.
If you didn't put a combined building, then maybe not.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking at locations again because that was one of your questions you asked in the beginning of alternate locations. What about on the south side in ninety two? And west of ninety two, there's that field there. I mean, if we gotta buy land anyway.
We looked at that. Didn't we discuss that at one of the meetings?
I thought we did. I just don't remember.
That fails that, I think, if we did and we decided.
The one on. Right at the corner.
Yeah, right across from.
Yeah. Yep, that's.
So.
Then you're on the far end of town again. You might as well just build that red dress.
Building.
Well, that's the horse of peace with. Off of Greenby Road. I mean, they're they're literally quarter mile or. One's here and one's here.
Anyway, we're talking for public works or just?
I like both locations would be big enough for a combined building.
You can always build a building. Uh you go on your building and then make it that you can add on to it pretty easily. You did with their library. They extended one hallway that's designed to be that bridge between library and village hall if they have a good one. So you can do that with your building to know, hey, thirty thousand years down the road or fifteen, whatever, we can totally build in here and you can plan for it. If it never happens, great.
I guess that's that's kind of where where my head's at is build a public works facility with the intention of adding village hall to it at some point in the future. That could be fifteen years from now or ten or maybe less. I don't know. You know, you could easily probably spend a million dollars in this building to renovate it, you know, add a lift to be able to get up, you know, to the offices and moving walls and if the food pantry can be moved out.
What?
I mean, just to make space and. You guys, you guys are here every day, so. What's your feedback on that?
Thing about this building is it's so old.
Right.
So what?
So. And so.
Those public works building, yeah.
Yeah, but if you're doing renovations, um you know, as soon as you, as soon as you take walls off, you gotta bring up the code.
Yeah.
Current code. And so if you did anything even a little significant here, you'd end up having to do the whole thing. About design or whatever, but I'm talking about the mechanicals, which you know, be the front of the cost anyway. About this building from the the eighties or nineties or whatever, but definitely that half of the building.
This was a connector.
Well, so again, I think at some point, and again, I don't know if it comes from a committee recommendation or we discussed here, but I think we need to figure out what our priority. You know, if if we all agree that Sugar River Park is, you know, because nothing can happen, community park until Sugar River Park gets done, so. Really, you know. I get at some point, we need to rank these one through, I guess, four with having separate, you know, you know, the option three and four or the third and fourth ones would be a joint public works and village hall or four would be separate buildings.
The only thing we really haven't discussed either is you could dramatically remodel one thirty South Vine. You'd have to add down sideways. I don't know, but. Always that.
It's got a kitchen in a piece.
Yeah, I know you have to go common house.
Is that, do we really want the industrial kitchen under village hall for the next thirty years?
Why? Yeah, we're not sure how long that industrial kitchen is gonna be there, but yeah.
I mean, I already can smell Gabe's lunch into my office because the HVAC here is so bad, so I'm just saying that I don't really wanna kitchen. That's me being facetious and it's.
It's two and a half every day.
Narrow, narrow, dude.
So what do we need? Do we need a portion to just move forward with working public works first and enabling village hall for now so we can not?
We have been making a decision on village hall too. Not just.
Like I said, for security wise, if you're gonna talk about just basic needs quickly, um I would do the security stuff, do the ADA stuff here. If it's like on a pig, you're gonna spend some money. And if you choose to build later, you can always say this was an investment or down the road. And then all the works guys, there are four guys that can't let something about building or figure something out. You can't put him down. I think their basics test about buildings, they can't. Was your new building?
Well, and to be very honest, we got this building for a steal when we got it because they did not want another bank in here, so they came to the village and offered us a under six figures or just six figures to purchase this building. So it was kind of like we'd spent a ton of money in this building over the years.
But you would now.
Well, now, yeah.
Right.
I'm saying, I mean, you know, so.
But I think, like Gary said earlier, people want their hotel down at Main Street. Easy access.
Survival part of the.
Village. Building on Main Street.
Yeah, but this building doesn't function.
That's where.
That's it's, yeah.
Look a little different to once again, when you're not having meetings down here. Your biggest concern about village hall and Main Street is your parking, especially as more businesses come on to Main. Especially as more businesses come onto Main Street, we're just, we're gonna parking. It's great for staff when there's big events happening. We get to park downtown all the time, but for the other people around here that could use the parking. Like having Village Hall down here when we're just collecting water bills, especially when there's not meetings here, meetings, elections, move to one thirty South Vine. The bread of the time people come to visit us will just be to pay their water bill or a pickup permit.
I think if you have.
I don't know what you mean.
People think of, will think of the village government as being there.
Years it'll be in the middle again.
Matt, you gotta be, you gotta think about, like, the counties that actually, kind of clerks are actually moving from downtown Madison. Which is just a pain to get to and park at, out to the airport, and Madison clerks are going with them, so that's on the fringe of Madison. I could, I shouldn't be, as, as a resident, in every community I've been to, I've never looked for the Village Hall first. Or the community hall first or anything first, I don't think, like, a lot of people actually care.
We aren't set up like on roll, where they've got a square, you know, around their village hall. And it's, you know, this masterpiece, you know, beautiful building.
Music typing is creepy though, right?
No, it's kinda fun.
You know.
And the city hall.
If I was gonna keep City Hall. Near Main Street here, well, unfortunately, it would be in Library Park is where it would be. But we know that's not an option, so. I don't wanna, I don't wanna get county worked up, but if, if you were gonna go for a location for a new building, that would be where it would be.
But you're awesome. So, based on what I'm kind of hearing is. But for you all kind of are pretty much under pressure that Public Works does need a new building. We can do something to stick on this pig for Village Hall, like, if we built a new building. You would build it to the fact that you could always add the addition later, so if it was Village Hall first, then you had Public Works or Public Works first, you had Village Hall second. Following you?
Yes, and, and I guess my opinion is, uh, Public Works would be first to get built. Because we have, you know, more equipment that's being ordered, we've got, you know, additional parks and, you know. Maintenance is, is growing.
So, would you like me to come back with pricing for what it would look like to build a new, uh, new Public Works while doing, let's take on pig with this?
Yeah, I'd like to see some numbers for that.
So to be able to do that, I'm probably gonna need funding to be able to do, uh, get some type of architect in there to. Do that, cause that's now outside of the scope that we agreed to overjoy, so.
Me too.
Just to kind of like, like, back and take a look at everything, like the park and the, and come up with, like a CIP that's actually doable. And then. Just have to be uprooting, build, build steel buildings and does design in-house.
I guess it's part of, yeah, I'm kinda looking for a second, possibly to clear it.
A second what?
Or something, you know, from a. Someone else that might be able to build a building.
How, okay, just for my own brain, the library was four million dollars. And the police station.
Two.
Just under two.
It was six million for those two buildings that included.
Oh, how did we end up at twenty million?
Dude, I don't know.
Construction, so starting with COVID, construction prices just skyrocketed.
I don't know, this happened during and after.
They've been going up the whole time.
Yeah, but.
Not, not twenty.
Let's just put it this way, the way I look at Public Works, you should be able to get. What they call as a shouse, you know, basically. Yeah, a barn, any of them, whatever, basically a pole building with some really nice stuff inside it. You know, couple rooms and things. I mean, do you need more than that? I mean, that's what you have now.
We don't need shiny, we just need more space.
So.
Yeah, it'd still be nice.
Can have the Amish put up an amazing pole building with insights and it coming a lot less money than that.
Hell yes, I'll see them do it.
So. Stand up a long time. But now, do we wanna keep it where it's at?
Public Works?
Yeah.
No, no.
So have we?
I, I just can't tear it down to build another one right there.
Yeah.
Oh, I know that.
Yeah.
No, but have we determined where we would, we would want it to go?
Oh, yeah, I still think it's either got cemetery, and again, we wouldn't necessarily use that whole area then. Or the option C that we came up with that the Public Works Properties meetings when, then we had FGMA come back and. You know, give us information or give us pricing on that. I mean, we did have a long discussion at Public Works that night about, you know. Getting in, getting to where we needed to go and, and if I recall correctly from that meeting. We didn't think that was a big deal for that location out there. I mean, a Public Works building, in my opinion, should be more on the outskirts of town. Or, you know, not buried downtown someplace, you know, that's taking a prime real estate.
I've spoken in, their Public Works building is far out of town with their dump site, like it's.
Yeah, it's just about every municipality I can think of there. So why don't, can't we talk to Landmark and see if they would sell that area between the bank and the co-op and see? If we're, you know, man. Anyway, man, land mid-flight pretty much wherever we want. Still, we can land that flight at federal. What were you gonna say, Tony?
I didn't think it would be better off putting it out there by the sewer plant.
If we have to buy land for it, I think it should go here on the corner of ninety-two.
So, let's take a time, I think we're all in agreement that a new public works building is first priority. Uh, location, I can come up with different ideas and I can present that back to you. And we all agree that there are some updates that we have to do with Village Hall, regardless if we build a new building or not later, there are upgrades that need to be happening here. Right? Like, I think we're on the same page with that.
Yeah.
All right, I will come back with something to present with how that aligns with our CIP.
So again, I'm gonna ask the question because of all the time and that has been spent on the parks plans. Are those on sale now or what are we doing?
Other parks on hold, I think you guys need to decide which is your priority, like, and do you wanna phase it differently than it is now? Uh, do you wanna just do Sugar River Park and then ten years later, do Community Park? Like, I think those are some of the questions that you guys need to.
I decide.
Brief input, I would like to say, um, from a public works perspective, with a fairly limited budget and some effort. We could make Community Park quite personal. I mean, it'd take a little bit of investment, but like, we could have Community Park be quite nice for quite a long time without the dramatic.
Yeah, I, I would agree. I agree a hundred percent. I mean, I, I think the top priority in Community Park has gotta be replacing that River Point Shelter. Cause every time I drive around there and see that empty slab, I get pissed off, like, um, you know, but. But I, yeah, I agree with that, but I think, you know, Sugar River Park is definitely, you know, that's bigger, more expensive of the two and. You know, I guess we need to kind of decide, I think we need to decide where that's at, so.
But I think we have to wait to make that decision until he comes back with those new numbers.
So, I will, I'll come up with some potential solutions, but then know at the next meeting that likely potential options that we lay out. Probably have to spend a little bit more money on getting the architectural design. Knowing that that's gonna be that next step. Cool, that gives me George, thank you.
Okay, Kenny, one last thing.
I'm sorry, I had dialysis today and it makes my brain go, um. Okay, first, why do we need a bigger boardroom?
Um, well, one, we don't have enough space in Village Hall as it is, and so, um, to be able to have a village boardroom. With staff and all of that, this space doesn't work, and so that's why we updated one thirty South Vine for Village Hall and elections.
Can't be cause of all of us here.
So you, and then also.
We should have the board meetings outside, it'll make us work faster.
There you go.
In January.
Yeah.
Process you have to go through to take away a donated land.
Uh, vacated, Nick Platt.
What?
Yeah, vacate the. It's all platted, it's all platted for, for graves right now, you have to vacate.
So you just take it away, you don't have to go legally?
Yeah, you gotta, well, you do if you're serving a court.
To share into the land.
Exactly.
They donated it.
I don't know anything about it, I'm just telling you, like, that's, that's.
Find out what the terms are.
I just wanna know if you have to go talk to them, cause Herb donated that land for the cemetery. If you're expansion of the cemetery, yes.
Get more people to buy plots there.
Yeah, that's, we got room for another three thousand grace amount of money.
Fraction of that for cemetery, and it's such a complicated, like.
There's like six grand left in the cemetery.
Sounds great to talk about. But that's an increasing expense, the bigger it gets, and it's not paid for.
So, just so you know, budget wise, I figured out today, you're, we can fund the cemetery, it can fund itself this year. For this twenty-six budget, but after twenty-six, you're in the circle of Jones. So, FYI, nothing you can do about it, it's just a general operating cost. Um, the procedure to vacate a cemetery, uh, the village currently owns and manages cemetery within bounds. It has been plotted to larger areas, but it's not been conveyed, um. So, yeah, initiation of the vacation process, uh, we have to take it to the circuit court, they schedule a hearing, give you a notice of a hearing. Attend the hearing, then the court, uh, approves the hearing. That's all you have to do.
Soon before it's going to approve the hearing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that, I'm saying legally, those are the process, is that what?
So his family would be invited.
They, they're invited, but they, like, they can talk to the court, but, like, we don't have to run it through that. Their approval is the court, the judge decide what.
Right?
What?
He gets to hear their side.
Well, the judge can do whatever the judge wants.
Think twice before you donate anything to the village. Oh, no, I won't. That's a terrible thing to say. I get a million bucks, you're not gonna, I get land, you won't get it.
Unbelievable.
Wow, just wow, next.
Okay, so you have direction on that, and you're satisfied. Moving on then, new business, uh, discuss consider resolution twenty twenty-five to twenty-four, authorizing use of section D line. High, on the levy limit worksheet for a joint fire department.
So you're gonna prove this every year, this is for us to be able to take the fire increase off our levy limit. And do increase that.
Motion, will you approve?
Wait, I think.
Right, Scott, seconded by Gary.
So I saw in here. So in the resolution itself. clarity. Uh, do 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 do. Where it says, whereas the joint fire department's district total charges assessed for the current year compared to the prior year increased four point six seven percent. Which is less than or equal to the percentage change in the consumer price index, blah, blah, blah. Then therefore it'd be resolved that the increase in assessed charges. So has it increased or is it less than?
About four point six seven percent is what's.
It's less than the allowable.
allowable, okay.
Seven, right?
Technically increasing your levy, you're allowing the levy to go up by their increase.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where I got confused, cause I'm, when I was reading it.
Yeah, that's a little CPI plus two thing, man.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a pro forma thing we basically have to do.
No, I know that, I just, the, the language, I was wanting clarification. Okay, sorry, next.
Any other comments, questions? None, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed. Passes.
And the reason why we're not having one three mess is because with our new budget, CBI plus two does, does not factor.
Next item, discuss consider an amendment to a tax agreement for Bell West First Edition parcels.
Numbers there, but. These are the two parcels that were purchased on Carolina Street, uh, Make More Park. The whole thing they did around getting signatures and everything, just pulling it off to the agreement that's outstanding from two thousand nine, I think. Um, for around the same time that it was platted and, and, uh, put into the tax agreement that it would, you know, only be used for single family housing. This is just waving bat.
I'm hopeful you approve the amendment to the tax agreement.
Second.
By Gary, seconded by Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
opposed.
Uh, next one's a breeze, too.
Set instead of resolution twenty twenty-five twenty-eight, authorizing support of a community development investment grant application.
Is a grant application that the yards is going through for the depot to help with their project costs through the state, and this is just saying. We support you trying to get money from the state for your project.
Motion to approve, authorized as supported by CDI grant, I'm a second. So, seconded by Tony. Discussion. All those in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Next item, discuss consider the Belleville Water Utility System Study.
Yes, we went, uh, back and forth at the MSA over two or three Public Works Committee meetings. Uh, until we got what we really wanted out of the study, which is, and this is looking at our, our water utility system. Of our wells to our storage tanks, to our pipes, our mains, and, um. Looking at here we stand now and where we are going to need to be future. And I will give you the very short version, they ended up giving us a, uh. Length, there are. Cost estimates for pipe expansions, there were several recommendations. Um, one, increasing all of our mains to a minimum of six inch mains. Some of the mains, expanding them beyond what they are, some of that are already six inches to eight or ten, um, some of the twelve. Um, the upsizing of our standing tank or the addition of a second tank. And then, there are some other things that would go in, go in there as well, a, uh, a booster station. As we, we grow farther in, we may need one. And then also the acquisition of a site for a fourth well, which is much farther in the future, we, we don't need it. Um, the, right now, and not anytime soon, and these are all fairly, these are all large numbers, the list of things. I told you is about fifteen million dollars, but it's not. There was nothing that was dramatic, that you are terribly deficient, this needs to be done now. Um, all of, all of the, uh, main upsizings would, of course, is something we would look at as we did. Need to go repairs for, for those areas, and we try to coordinate those two things. So it would be a sort of Pete's deal attack on, on some of this. Some of the big takeaways are for our daily consumption, even with our projected growth, even maximizing sort of the. The high end of projected growth, uh, we are perfectly adequate for our day-to-day consumption. Use of people with our three wells and our standing water tank. The place we do fall short is our needed flow and water pressure for fire emergencies. That we are short on, and that is a combination of two things, it's, it's not our wells, our wells actually are, are perfectly fine and perfectly adequate for that. But one, some of the mains are too small, and B, um, the water storage, we just don't have adequate. And B um, the water storage, we just don't have adequate uh water storage to. At the, I forget what the number is, twenty five hundred gallons.
Per minute.
Is is that what it is? I don't recall exactly, but that is where we are short. Um. But again, this is, this is a great overview for where we need to go and, you know, in the next. I wanna say it it's fairly good about being spread about it, the next three years, the next ten years, next fifteen years, things about that. It it's a good spread with a lot of information in it. Um, it's a good. Instruction manual or or guidance for for where to go in the future.
Page two has a list of projects and the timeframe and what they thought they should be done, so. Yes, the the big item, a new well is ten to thirty years out according to that, so. The uh. Last two pages have the cost breakdown.
When costs.
Really important to to understand about this is this is not general obligation debt, like we were just talking about with the uh the. This would be the water utility, so it'd be, you know, enterprise fund revenue debt. Um, backed by utility revenues, not by tax revenues, so. Uh, that and then um talking about the upsizing, I mean, obviously functionally for fire flows, you need the amount of water you need, but. Um, once we meet those, uh, you know, we'll we'll move further up on the ISO scale, um, insurance service. Office scale measures capability of communities to respond to fire and then transmit that information in kind of like a uh. A scorecard to insurance companies, so the better ISO score we have, the less people here will pay for fire insurance. It helps everybody out.
I would highly recommend that you read through. There's sort of a lot of stuff in here, but there's there's a lot of good information, so.
I thought it was really interesting the way they broke everything out into the. Different aspects and.
I thought it was gonna be.
It was super educational. I loved it.
Yeah, this this is the. Great study. What's that?
Hopefully read something like this for sure.
It's interesting to see our top ten users. So part of part of the pain for this, you know, some of these are extensions and things into new development areas. And stuff, so are we are we properly? Uh. Charging for in our fees for. Taking this into account and would be one of my concerns of, you know, growth, paying for growth. Type of thing and.
So there's certain things, yes, uh, you know, that we can work on, certain things, no, because unlike sewer and stormwater, uh, this is governed by PSC, so. Uh, they tell us what we can and cannot charge, so where we have like a uh sewer connection fee for all new sewer hookups. We can't do that.
Yeah.
Uh, for water. So like we're talking about placement for a new well, um, you know, we had a few suggestions on where it could be placed. Um, obviously they worked that in the preliminary plat discussions where, you know, the dedicated parks anyway, not dedicate a land that's just for. A wellhouse, a future wellhouse or something like that, wherever we determine. The most fee, something like that, but but yeah. Um, as far as like the the growth pain for gold, I mean, they they pay for and install. All of the utilities and new developments, so it would really just be, you know, wellhouse, water tower that we need to worry about. That would have anything to do with um the utilities in the development, otherwise everything's already paid for.
And these recommendations and here the bigger mains would show, you know, as the subdivisions come in, we would tell them how big a main they have to put in.
Oh, yeah, that's that's in our our. Yeah, and that's all stuff that's communicated, I mean, current knows that, but that's communicated all developers uh by Kevin through the flat process.
Yeah. Some numbers to. Be placed as placeholders in the budget. I need. Need any action amendments or anything, right?
Oh, probably.
Pro just accept the.
Accept the study.
I'm moving that we accept the water system study.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Yes. Discuss and consider a request or proposal for a commercial property realtor.
So we own land on the west side now, which we also reimbursed just earlier today. Uh, with the uh, at issuances, oh. I figured it might be a good idea just to bring in a commercial realtor to help us. Sell the land on the west side or to help us negotiate kind of come. Yeah, um, but we want, uh, we want it, what kind of agreement we're in. It's a good sale price, all that kind of stuff, to kind of take that, you know, also staff to be able to do cuz they have better connections. Obviously, if village sells one of the lots without them involved in it, then great, they don't get paid, but they. Or we can come up with some type of agreement with them, but the economic development committee recommends grabbing this art. Well, there's a couple corrections that need to be made in here, uh, page four, item three B. Uh, the subject line should not be the Bellville twenty twenty six apprehensive apprehensive plan proposal, should be whoever they said. Okay, and then on page uh. Like page here, page. Five. Um. Under November seventeenth. Earlier in the document, it says that the village board will have the interviews and and the November seventeenth line, it says the plant commission, so we just need to. Just doing those, us with the plant commission. Probably neither, actually, um. Well, then you need to take it out or earlier talk about it than on page uh. Um, talk about the review process, you've got the. I probably have the economic development committee doing that. So this needs to be consistent, so. Yeah, be divided on the page or on the top of page five, can, because with the village board will be at the November seventeenth village board meeting, so. That mean you will make the. Yeah, but are we doing the interviews or is it sounds there like village board's gonna get up to thirty minutes for three to five. Different. Uh. vendors to, we're gonna do those interviews, so.
No, that wouldn't be right, so.
Yeah, so you just need to clean that up.
Take some numbers.
I'll do. I'm moved that we um. Before we look to request for proposal for community property, for a community. Commercial property realtor. Uh, as amended, as revised.
Session.
Very second by Shelley. Discussion. Those in favor? Opposed? Discuss, consider update on the recruitment and selection.
Stop agenda. Stop.
The selection process for police department personnel. Just to give you an update, the uh. Police committee has. Police department trying to move. As it's efficiently as we can. With the candidates, since it's a dog eat dog. Are in pool out there. So we uh, when we go into post session, we'll discuss the three candidates, but more or less a little change up from last time. What I'm doing is background investigations uh prior to extending a conditional offer. Additional offer, the. Most time consuming part is the background investigation, the medical and the uh site. Are the ones that cost the most money, I guess, from that standpoint. Um, but so for the police officer selection process, that's the only thing we're changing up. We ended up having a total of twenty three applicants, fourteen met the criteria, nine did not. Um, compared to our last hiring process where we got twenty one, this time we used indeed, so in the more or less. Uh, two months, we had the posting out there, um, compared to was in November to June. Is our last process, um, so indeed did help. We did the paid subscription on it, so it did broaden our um. Uh, net for that, we used the same written test, the interview panel this time. Um, we included uh the principal from the elementary school as part of the interview board, since we're starting anew. Uh, with the department, so um, so yeah, so there was three that had chief's interview. We'll talk about those in closed session. Um, when we come out of closed session, uh, the motion will be to, if they pass. The background investigation, then to extend them a conditional offer of employment. And then if they basically as part of that, if they pass the conditional, then they'll move automatically to probationary, so. I started getting the notations down there. We did have interviews on the fourth of October. We'll have it again. Possibly the fifteenth or a week sooner. I'm still waiting for the candidates. Um, that are eligible to interview to see if they can move up to the eighth uh of November. Uh, academies start January twelfth for Blackhawk. I'm still waiting to hear back from Madison Technical College, so. Um, more or less the academies need a, at least Blackhawk needs us to notify them of how many seats. They have one reserved for sure. Uh, sometimes they'll have more, but they need to know by November thirtieth that we'll use that sheet, the uh, that seat or need additional. Regards to the captain's process kind of outlines, it's gonna be run similar to the way the police chief process was. The employment posting was put out on September fifth with a closing date of Wednesday of this week. Again, we did utilize uh indeed, so far we have fourteen applications, five met the criteria, nine did not. Uh, they either were from out of state or um did not uh meet their requisite supervisory experience. Uh, we're using the same company that we're using for the police officers for a supervisory exam, so that's the National Testing Network. So far, five have uh been invited to take the test, one has taken it, and I have not heard replies back from three. And one uh withdrew from the process, so. Interview panels will be a one day event. The panels will consist of a law enforcement peer slash PD administrative. Assistant and then Belleville's uh either first or second in commands for fire and EMS. Um, then there'll be the police committee, village administrator, and then a school district representative on that. And then the third interview will just be the chief's interview with me, so. Uh, same thing, we'll do the background investigation first, if things are looking good there, then uh we'll move on to the conditional offer of employment. And if things go well with the conditional offer, then we'll move on to a probationary status. Uh, probationary status for village employees and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, gave us six months. So compared to officers, which is eighteen. So questions, I know there have been questions. Uh, regarding the uh process. There's no questions.
Still, I mean, we had a pretty solid process in in place. That's all. That's why I don't have any questions.
Very good.
I mean, since Chief has been doing these interview processes, they've been going really good.
It sounds like switching to indeed helped. It's timeless, like.
And I also threw it on my uh LinkedIn page.
And then what we did after the interviews, at least for these three candidates that we're going into closed session for, is I interviewed them. Um, and basically had the. Packs on the same day so that we could just keep this process moving, so. The um ones on October fourth that the panel interviewed. Uh, panel asked me to uh do chief's interview with two of them, so I sent them the invite. And the background investigation material so that they can bring that to the chief's interview. We need any action on this, do we? Forward then. And twelve reports from boards, commissions, committees, uh. In joint.
Uh, the ten driver of the works, for those who don't know, driver of the works is the by, just the tids. So every year we have to have an annual meeting, this was the annual meeting, I serve as the chair of that. School district, the village, M A T C, um, D and Riverine County, all have seats on it. Say what we do with the tids, we don't need the tids, so others presented their report and. So, uh, not for the board, except that our, you know, reports are. These names ask questions.
CDA.
Oh, hey, that's me. So actually, our last meeting really, I'll read. Decided on was. There was some question as to if we should keep them monthly or. Do every other month. Just because of schedules and everything, but we decided. CDA is pretty an essential part of the village, so we decided to keep them monthly. Yeah. I agree.
Like building in Sugar River ad hoc, Gary?
Really had a relatively short meeting, um. Couple things that came out of it is the uh. Yeah, whatever bathymetric or whatever the study where I heard that the RFP that was went out. In the process of that, so if you see people running around in the in the lake with boats and it looks like they're shocking fish, they're they're stunning them. To do everything that was included in the uh uh study that's being done, I. And again, that was part of a board package before that, the scope for that, and then. Uh, we are not meeting this month, we're gonna meet in November. And then not in December, and then starting January first, we're gonna start reading the Thursday of the month at five thirty, so.
Please. District.
Everybody was at the meeting last week when the. There's a special meeting tomorrow night to deal with the this new agreement and then. Week from tomorrow is the annual meeting and I'm guessing it's gonna be at the EMS building that.
I had actually scheduled it for the library.
Oh, did they? Okay.
Public Works.
Um, we met, we had again relatively short meeting. Um, reviewed and recommended the the water study and. Uh, looked at some well. Maintenance, the reports that were done, so. And we are meeting, the next meeting. Um, was originally scheduled for the twenty eighth, it's now the twenty first at six o'clock at the library. There's a finance on the on a normal meeting night, so.
E T.
Yeah, just the RFP for the commercial property.
And arts and culture.
The era elusive. Um, Maren, I don't know, have you heard that?
I I have heard from the um, from the artist and he sent me some. Uh, prices and some options. I haven't looked at it too closely cuz I figured we would. We talk about it and then we can bring it to the committee in November if you want.
I say, I don't find it as well.
No.
And and a scaled down interior version of it. If we want to go in that direction. Or we can go in a totally different direction. I don't know.
Sounds horrible. Let's hide it. Alright. Two cents, uh, education miscellaneous business, losing announcement.
Two cents. Uh, education miscellaneous business, losing announcements. Upcoming community event, events. Village calendar.
Your mother.
Yep. Coming up at the end of the month. Future agenda items.
Um, I am going to have the Biden Street Park entrance for you guys on the twentieth. Or probably not actually, uh, they can put two uh. Click the tables. The path of the divification, so. Is that, that. Based on the last comment, so probably not. That's the only thing right now I have on this. Uh, break man field. And then probably I may present some capital item changes, just so you see where everything's at. Uh, I've pointed some items from the operating budget as to help with levy to put it in capital. Like the construction standards, G I S, uh, econ plan, just it'll help.
And Atlanta no finances next Monday night, we're dealing with utility budget and. Fifth, right?
Yes, finances, uh, utilities and real utilities.
Utility, so again, if you want to come, that would be a good meeting to come to, so.
And then I'll have to indicate then what the new numbers as presented.
Alright. Village of Belleville Village Board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen dot eight five subsection one subsection C. Considering the employment promotion compensation or performance valuation data. Any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. The village board may reconvene in the open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. But a few items, uh, discuss considering recent police department personnel resignations. Discuss and consider an offer of employment for Molly Hope Teen. As a part-time patrol officer, discuss consider an offer of employment for Brady Card as a. Patrol officer, discuss consider an offer of employment for Eric. Ackland as a patrol officer, discuss and consider an offer of employment for Nathan. Ogo? Yes, as a patrol officer, discuss and consider the compensation for part-time patrol officers.
I make a motion, we go into closed session.
Second.
Twenty second by Debbie. We'll call loads.
Um, service.
Yes.
The trustees, Ben.
Yes.
Longard.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Alex Kraut.
Yes.
And Ziegler.
Yes.
Close session.
Close session.
Eight thirteen.
Read a second here friends.
9:09 PM.
We're back online.
We start with motion show.
This is recorded.
I want to write some.
I know everyone wants to go.
Yeah, we do. I'm ready.
All right, make a motion to higher. Ollie.
Hi.
Old team as part-time patrol officer.
Second.
Laws in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And we'll make a motion to extend a conditional offer of employment to Eric Backlund. As patrol officer.
Sir.
Second.
Give it time.
And.
Is that it? Scott? Okay.
Can I make an amendment to that motion that it include pending background, passing background until then?
So. Well, that is part of conditional motion.
Conditional offer employment, the wording we're going to put in the minutes, if that's okay with all of y'all, would be a conditional offer of employment for full-time police officer if they pass the background investigation phase. That's what you said, right? Because I'm pretty sure that's what I heard.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Thanks.
Okay, sorry. All on board? We know what we're voting on.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Some pass. Make a motion to set the wage for part-time patrol officers $28 an hour and for part-time officers training at $30 an hour.
Second.
Is that right, Kim?
Uh, yeah, 30 and 25.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some passes.
I make a motion re-adjourn.
Thanks.
Yes, sir. Nancy Kids. It's all those in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Some passes. We are adjourned at 9:11.